Evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock, seven o'clock. First thing we're gonna do here is have a roll call. Council position number one, Joe Armon.
I'm here.
Number two, David.
Present.
Present. Number three, Stephen Hardy.
Here.
Number four, Peter Davenport.
Present.
Uh, no Levi Shank at the moment. We'll hope he makes it. Any of the visitors who would like to get on to the minutes, please state your name.
Mary Tormack.
Denise Holland.
Stan Roth.
Dave Gantz.
Thank you. So, first thing on the list tonight is to approve the payroll. I have a copy if anybody needs one.
You know, I never got one in the...
You should've got that one today, but...
Okay.
There's a payroll. That one's pretty straightforward, I think.
Oh, you're right.
Actually...
David, I had, I talked to Jerry about other questions, but the payroll isn't in the packet.
No.
We talked about the check register, but...
Actually, I would like to back up if we could just for a moment. Would somebody like to entertain a motion to approve the payroll?
Sure. I'll entertain it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
So, a motion's been made by Stephen to, uh... Look at the payroll here.
I see it all.
Seconded by Joe.
Sure, I'll second it by Joe.
Payroll is now on the floor for discussion.
Have you seen it, Peter?
Before mentioned, uh, document?
Do you think, oh, sorry about that.
Have you seen it, Peter?
Our printer has died this afternoon. When it heard this afternoon that our new one was going to be delivered next Tuesday, it said, "I'm done."
Yeah, it's called quiet, but...
So...
Wow.
Somehow, we're gonna have to survive without a printer for two days.
We're just gonna shut down City Hall.
Yep. If I hadn't already motioned to approve that, I'd motion to approve that.
David, did you see that one? You can pass it, pass that one over to Peter. You guys got the second two of the claims?
Yes, we got those.
Yep.
This came out this afternoon, so...
There it is.
It's good.
So, we got a motion on the floor to approve the payroll. For the nine-one payroll. Any further discussion?
None here.
All in favor of accepting the payroll as written, say aye.
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 Oppose the same? Five-zero, thank you, gentlemen.
Four-zero.
Four-zero? Excuse me. I better change that right now. Next thing on our agenda tonight is to approve the claims. And you guys did get copies of those?
Yes.
We'll start with the one on the eight-twenty-nine.
So, transaction six-eight-eight. Through six-nine-five.
Claim number six-eight, or transaction six-eight-eight, AAA Labs?
Yeah, through six-nine-five, yeah.
Oh, that's the one. You're not questioning six-eight-eight.
No, no, no. No, no, I'm, I'm just making sure that...
Yes, yes, sorry about that. Yep.
It's August twenty-ninth.
Mm-hmm.
On six-ninety-three, uh, Mr. Mayor, is that for David Binghamman?
Yes.
Is that on top of the last, or last, uh, figure you showed at the last meeting?
No.
Okay.
There is more coming, 'cause he did some other things. This was basically the one for the nuisance.
Gotcha. Okay.
That, that is the one I brought up last, and we're just now sending it out.
Did you say item six-ninety, David?
I, um, said six-nine-three.
I have a question on six-ninety.
HD Fowler parts?
Yeah.
Yeah?
To whom did we write the wrong check?
That would be the one, that's six-ninety-one.
Lincoln County Record.
Record Times.
They just go by, what do they go by? Record Times? I believe.
That's a voided check, Peter. Uh, Jerry, can you shed any light on that?
What are we looking at?
Uh, transaction six-nine-one.
Check number one-zero-five-eight-zero written to the Lincoln County Record Times.
The... I sent out an ad to the Lincoln County Times and the Advertiser. The Advertiser's bill was twenty-nine-thirty, and when I cut the check, I accidentally sent it to the Davenport Times. So, I had to void that check and send it out to the advertiser.
It would eventually get there, wouldn't it, Jerry?
We hope. That answer your question, Peter?
Yeah, that does, thank you.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Now, we got a motion on the floor by David to approve the claims for eight-twenty-nine. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of approving those?
Aye.
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 Oppose the same? Okay.
Four-zero.
Second page. If we can get a motion to, uh, bring that one up for discussion, the one on nine-eight?
Some of...
I'll second.
Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded, moved by Stephen, seconded by Joe, to pay the check register. On the floor for discussion.
Transaction seven-one-eight, Century Link, that was a voided check as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Etch Dream, uh, seven-nineteen, the Etch Dreams, excuse me, five-hundred-and-sixty dollars, Town Square Brook etching, that's part of that grant and all that stuff, that's non-consequential.
Passed through.
And then, seven-twenty-two, HD Fowler Company, more repair clamps?
Yes.
I was just wondering, is there maybe a different discussion later, but is, are they the only game in town? Pretty much, or probably one we trust, though?
Actually, no, we've ordered a couple from, uh, Ranger.
Okay.
Which seem to be cheaper. And we just got our first sample, and it looks like it's gonna be fine, but we'll go over that with the boys at the Public Works tomorrow.
Like, like, how many clamps is that, about three or four? I mean, they're really spendy, aren't they?
Well, they're around two-hundred bucks a piece.
Okay.
Is that correct, Jerry? And, and up.
Three-hundred or so.
Yeah.
Depending on size?
I could show you pictures of the last three or four holes that we dug, where there's four or five of them in a row.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I have no, I have no issues with that, I was just wondering if that was...
Sure.
Or the... Add-on?
I do have one question, it's not necessarily directly at these claims, but it's, uh, you mentioned a new printer, is that with a different source, or is that still with Rico?
It's still with Rico.
Okay.
It'll, it's more of a top-of-the-line one, that'll be about the same price as now.
Okay.
And that's arriving soon.
Always.
We talked about it.
That was my suggestion.
That doesn't matter yet, 'cause we're still
Yeah.
under the same contract, yeah.
Question, seven, transaction seven-twenty-five, Lincoln County Public Works, for three-thousand-three-hundred-five dollars, eighty-eight cents, MSW one-on-one, what does the MSW mean?
Immunable Solid Waste.
Okay. Is that something? Well, that's not our, that's not our tipping fees, is it?
Yes.
That is?
Yeah.
Okay. It just stood out like it's a lot more than it has been, like...
Does anyone know how many tons that represents? Do we get a report? We get a report, but it doesn't have the tonnage on it.
They don't give you a tonnage then, or correct?
They just want their money.
Did they ever, did they ever give us a, a figure for that? The tonnage, they never did?
No, not that I'm aware of.
That'd be helpful for us going forward, you know?
Well, weren't we supposed to do a renegotiation with Sunshine?
Yes, um...
'Cause I think you said you had talked with him, isn't?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't recall the fellow's name, but it sounded like he was in the higher echelon there. He mentioned in the fall, September-ish or whatever, but I don't know. It's really not a good time to negotiate right now with fuel prices. But, uh, it definitely has to be something addressed with the, but I have not heard from him, made any contact, or, you know, haven't heard boo. But that, that's up too, I don't know when our contract expires. Does anybody, Dirk know? Not written.
If, if it puts your heart at ease, when I get the bill, it's about twenty-five pages thick. And I go line by line through that, and anybody with additional charges gets that charge on their bill. I just bet. I just readjust their bills. So, some bills will go up, and some bills will come down, and...
Residents here. Like, just extra baggage outside of the can type of deal?
Yeah.
Got it.
'Cause the garbage is supposed to remain in the can. And anything extra, you get charged for.
I see. I guess when that time comes for, we'll, we'll dig into, uh... The solid waste. Find out what the tonnage is and records of that for... But right now, it's non-consequential. So, I'm good with them.
Question regarding seven-twenty-nine, Department of Health, State of Washington, what did they do for four-hundred-and-eight dollars? Anybody know? Yes.
They tasted our water.
They, they told us we had to have a water survey. So, they came over, gave us a water survey, and then handed us a bill. Ended up what?
They handed us a bill.
And they handed us a bill afterwards. So that... Did we get a report from them? Yes, we did. We passed.
To the tune of four-hundred-and-eight dollars.
And this was a person from the state, it wasn't local county?
Yeah, it was a state person that invited themselves over.
Russell Mao. He's the head of the drinking water. And they came and toured our well facilities, and went over the good and bad points of our water. And then charged us for it.
And then charged us for it.
Took them past Willis Street.
And did... Yeah, I'm not gonna go into any of this governmental charges.
How many pizzas were on that bill?
None.
Okay.
Everybody what?
Pizzas.
Pizzas, lunch.
We didn't take him to lunch.
Was it, is that a one-time, kind of because of the situation?
I believe it's six years, four years, there's a...
Okay.
It's not, not an every-year thing.
It doesn't happen very often.
No. We also are gonna have a bill coming up for a tank inspection.
Our water tank?
Our water tank is going to be inspected, uh... October twelfth, I believe it was. Uh, I'll have to verify the date, and they're bringing a robotic camera this time, not a diver.
Dude's not gonna swim this time?
No, no diver this time.
Okay.
They didn't wanna have to...
Chlorinate it?
I don't know what all that problem is, but, but that's going to be about a twenty-five-hundred-dollar bill, but...
That's never cheap.
If I had to climb to the top of that tank, you couldn't afford it, so...
Okay.
Anyway, that's coming next month or end of next month, could be snow. All right. Back to the bills.
Yeah, I'm good with them.
I'm good.
So, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the check register as presented?
Aye.
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 Oppose, say the same? Okay, wonderful guys.
Now you have five-zero.
Now we got a five-zero there, very good. Next thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes from August twenty-fourth.
Move to approve as presented?
Second.
So, it's been moved and seconded by Levi that we approve the minutes, further discussion?
I see, uh, at four-forty today, there was a revised August twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
What, real quickly, what was the revision?
There's a couple of spelling corrections in here, I've got the old one if you can find them.
So, not, not the major, I was just...
No.
Okay.
Is, that was, is that correct, Jerry?
That is correct.
Okay.
Called the question?
Second.
So, it's been moved and seconded, and we called the question. So, all in favor of accepting the minutes as written, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same?
One abstention.
One abstention. That would be you?
Yes.
Okay.
Four-zero?
One. We were expecting a treasures report, and I spent most of the morning getting our treasurer hooked up through Single Point. We still had several people on there, and she was unable to gain access to quite a few of the necessary pieces of information, so as of today, that's been handled, and three former people have been removed from that account.
It's no longer a Single Point failure.
That's correct. So... I have not talked to her since mid-afternoon, she's been working all day, we should have our treasures report in good shape for the next meeting, in fact, she said she would bring one in possibly tomorrow, if anybody would like to have that sent to them. Okay? Next thing on the list is library board. And the thing that needs to be done for the library board was section three says, "A library board member shall be approved by the mayor with the consent of the city council." And this draft was drawn up, I know you've seen it, Joe, and all of you should have a copy of that.
Yeah.
So, if somebody would like to entertain a motion to accept the people... Yeah, resolution two-three... Yes?
Uh, I, I move that we accept resolution two-thirty-seven dash two-thousand-twenty-two as written. I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. So, it's been moved and a second that we accept resolution two-thirty-seven, two-thousand-twenty-two as written. That's in regards to the, accepting the names drawn for the library board. All in favor of that resolution?
All right.
Or, excuse me, is there any more discussion?
I just have one question.
Yes.
When, what date does it become effective or renew? Is it...
It's different for each person.
Um, but I mean, but usually like June of every year?
Oh, that's, that's in here, David.
Yeah, I was just trying to refresh everybody, the record.
Every July thirty-first?
It's no longer December thirty-first.
Okay.
July thirty-first, two-thousand-twenty-three.
So, they all, all of them follow through when they get that term, it's on the thirty-first of July?
July, yeah.
Okay, no, no worries.
Okay. We've had a motion and a second to approve that, any further discussion?
I'm good.
No.
You're good.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same? Wonderful, guys.
Five-zero.
I would like to ask of the council here, we are eight months away from the commercial lease for our property across the highway here. And I would like to see a committee get together and start working on a new lease. There was many things wrong with the last one. So, that should give us plenty of time to put that together and present it to our tenants, and we can move forward. Can I get, uh, any volunteers to be on that committee?
There's only, there's only one thing I recommend, is that, being as we're not lawyers, attorneys, is that some of this get run by the...
Absolutely.
The attorney, um, our legal attorney, our attorney.
Yeah.
'Cause I know there's a few things in here, just by what we've talked about. One was what constitutes a re-automatic or a renewal? Do they have to legally sign it, is a new one drawn up? That's never been answered or clarified. And, and no fault of ours, I mean, that's the way this...
Anybody need a copy?
Was presented. And, um... What can we do about what they've done to it? And how their, um, their domes, or living quarters, if they, if that is so true, and things of that nature, and that's, again, that's out of my expertise, I know we could kick that cam around a lot, but until legally what we can do, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable coming up with something, but I would, I would volunteer to be on that if, if need be.
So, I think it's just the kind of thing we need to start talking about, every time we talked about that, uh, it was after the fact, and this time, I think we should be well-prepared to make sure that we're leasing it the way we would like to lease it.
Right. I would agree with that. And the only question I would have, um, not privy to, has there been any complaints, concerns, or needs from, uh, Johnson Towing? Is everything copacetic, has it been quiet on the home front, or is there something, anything brewing in the background, anybody knows?
I don't really...
Okay. 'Cause I believe that, that this lease currently, as we're treating it, will expire May thirty-first?
Correct.
I think it was?
I printed that out, and it must be over on my desk. 'Cause that was, I, I got in there...
You just had it in your hand.
Well, yeah.
No, this one, this is an old one, I printed out when the lease was renewed, and I don't see here...
They were renewed for two years.
It was, and I believe it was May thirty-first.
The date on the top of the first one doesn't count, correct? So, the first one was two years. Right. It had an option. That was from twenty-nineteen. For another two years. Okay. But that's it, that, that lease with the extension expires May thirty-first, two-thousand-twenty-three.
Exactly.
Done.
Yeah.
And the option to renew is sixty days prior to the expiration date of the lease.
Well, what I'm saying is, the original lease only gave one option to renew.
Right.
Not use.
Well, that, that, I'm glad you brought that up, because I read this several times, an option to renew. The language in here, anybody explain? It, it says, "Leasee may have the right to renew the lease with a total of one," parentheses, "renewal periods with each term being two years." What exactly is that meaning to everybody? Is that saying they can automatically just, every two years, come in and say, "Yes, another two, another two"?
No, it's, the way I read that, it can renew, be renewed once. And the period is for two years.
But it says periods, plural.
Yeah, with the plural on there.
That's what throws me, was that a typo? Let's see that, that's where an attorney could...
If it had typos, we can cut that document to shreds, so...
Well, that's the only thing I was looking at, or, or one of the things that, uh, trying to scratch my head, what exactly was meant by that? But definitely, I would recommend we come up with points, and it goes through, I don't, I, I wouldn't think it would be, uh, very expensive for Mr. Binghamman to stand up on this, or say, "Well, we can't," you know?
I'd, I'd be willing to work on it. Um, in, in my opinion, we should be able to get a somewhat of the boilerplate language, most standard commercial leases, and then we can just tailor it to what the expectations is of the city and the council, and then present it to Binghamman, so it's, it's an hour or so of his time to...
Yeah.
Or a couple, but...
Instead of...
Yeah.
Does that mean you two have this? I'm, I will volunteer to be a part of that, I mean, I've been kind of...
Well, is there any way that all of us could work on it?
I don't think you can have more than two, if you have three, it becomes a quorum, and then you're in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Unless you just work on it in an open public meeting.
Yeah.
I was gonna be willing to serve with it as well, I just know that, uh, while I think we're all agreed on clearing up the vagueness to the current agreement, I might have had a little bit of a different perspective on how we deal with what they're allowed to do with the premises, and then specifically, that got into a whole concern, and is in and of itself has to fire danger there, so, um, I might not be the best person to...
Well, I'll step down and let you do it, with Joe down.
Uh, whichever you prefer.
As long as, I'd feel comfortable, whatever we do, the attorney...
Has a look at it before me.
Yeah, so we don't get...
Well, I think as a council, we'd all have to read it and sit, give her a snap of approval on it anyway, so...
So, there's no reason why two persons can't get together and start hammering this out, and then bring it to a council meeting?
Start putting the framework together.
And open for discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't see why not.
Yeah.
It's just something I, when I thought about that today, I looked, and we're eight months out, and it seems to me, we gotta do that sixty days ahead of time.
Do we have this in editable form, or is this as good as what we have? I'm just wondering whether I'll need to retype it or not.
I'd recommend trashing it and start over.
Do you want a paper copy? No?
I may, I may have a scan.
Jerry graciously sent me a digital copy that I have, right there.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think we start with what we have, at least enough to outline the changes of what we don't like, so that we can give Binghamman an idea of what we think is wrong with this document, and focus him a specific direction.
Right. Well, some of the, excuse me, some of the biggies are gonna be the changing the structure to a living quarters and, and, yeah, all that, that's gonna be the main...
I think they have to return it to the condition that it was when they... I think they have to return it to the condition that it was when they signed the lease.
Mm-hmm. There's something in there like that, yeah.
The current situation there will have to be rectified before by the current owner.
I guess the thing that might be pertinent as Joe and I go away and work on it is, is it still, my impression, the last time we discussed this, was that the council's collective feelings towards it was to not allow it to be a living space. I believe I might have been the only abstention to that, so is, is that still true? In which case I will work towards crafting a document that reflects what the council will vote through.
What is that zoned for? Refresh my memory, is that
It's not zoned for it, but we talked to Justin Slack and Justin said that it was not, it wouldn't be a big deal.
Okay, we could give a variance for that. Okay.
Well, technically it's not even in the city limits.
Right, it's just city property.
Which is City owned property.
Why it had to be zoned at the county level, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay. But there gets a, the valuation of, if it's a resident plus a business, then you talk about rent values.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely. So who have I, who have I got on this list right now?
I think it's, I think it's Joe and I.
Okay.
And Peter.
Okay.
No, Peter's not.
Okay.
Question. Are the current tenants aware of our feelings towards their living in the facility?
I think we made that clear to the current residents months ago. And they were going to keep us posted on a regular basis as to
We should let them know that we continue to allow to feel that way to give them time to find alternative residents.
Okay.
That can be done.
So noted. Next issue, mayor's comments. I can say with a big smile on my face, at the moment, we have no major artesian wells flowing in any street or parking street. That's been months, so I can't tell you there's not a couple of wet spots, but there's no longer active flowing. That's the first time in the last eight months that that's been a true statement.
No bird baths.
So the Lions Club can't sell a skating rink for
Sure you can. I mean, I wouldn't bet that Willis is gonna stay dry for thirty days. There's, there's no money from my pocket going on that one. But it's been dry for a couple of weeks, so that's absolutely amazing to me. We have a new part-time seasonal public worker. His name is Brandon Shaw, young man who lives down near Hawk Creek, pretty big boy, if you've seen him around. He's one of them ones I refer to. He's big enough to eat hay, so he didn't, wasn't worried about getting on the end of a shovel.
Okay.
And he's been pretty helpful for, uh,
Troy.
For Troy in the past week and a half here. We have him for thirty hours a week only, so he's working Monday through Thursday. And so far, he seems to be a big help between the two of them, then get some of that out of the way.
Troy will appreciate that.
Is he a Harrington resident or Davenport?
Davenport, I believe, is where he's actually from.
Hawk Creek, you said?
Yeah, Hawk Creek area. He lives with his grandma and other family members there. The hotel, if you've been by there lately, you've seen our back truck there. That was supposed to be a twenty-minute job to dig up a little pipe and find out where it went. And in true Harrington fashion, it's probably been fifty feet or more of ditching. I can show you pictures of pipes that intersect with pipes and go to places that nobody has any idea. And we now have placed it to right up next to the sidewalk at about a five-foot diameter hole where there's four pipes that come together into an X.
Are any of them made out of wood?
No.
Okay.
We have found a couple of those in there though.
Quick question, Mr. Mayor, is it, was that for the city's benefit or the hotel, uh, owners?
It's, well, we had a leaking pipe there, so when, uh,
I mean, our responsibility, let me clarify that.
I would say that's our responsibility. It's our fresh water that's running out of there. So it kinda stems the, as we, every time we dig in here, we find more pipes than we think we're gonna find. So we're going to cut all of them off except one.
My question, are, how many of those are active pipes?
We're going to freeze the one we believe is the one coming under the street from the main.
Okay.
And the rest of them, well, it's going to go straight through to the hotel and that's it.
Okay.
I, I couldn't be part of the hotel being flooded from pipes that we knew were in the ground after they spend years of restoration there.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we can sleep that we no longer have pipes in the ground that
Where's the meter for that? Do you, do you happen to know at all?
Yes, inside.
But it's inside the hotel?
Yeah.
Did we ever get that pounded out? Discussion, whether responsible, we've, we've read
Mm-hmm, I thought that was
conflicting, but are we responsible to the meter or property line now? Or what, what, what have you been telling people?
Property line.
Okay.
You and I went through that once here.
So
Last winter.
With the changes to the pipes then, are we moving there or putting a new water meter in since we have the ground open?
No, the ground, could we? If we had one and all the necessary hardware?
Okay.
I'm hate to tell you, we're still waiting at six months now for some of the hardware for the first one that we opened up
Yeah.
At the north end of town. Hardware is becoming an absolute
If we had it, I was like, yep, supply chain. Yeah.
So if we had the equipment, could we put one in? Yeah. In all reality, if it leaks inside the wall, that's not my problem.
Right.
That's the owner's problem, just like the one in my basement. Where everybody wants, do you tell you it's where it comes out of the meter? That's not necessarily true. It's the property line. If the meter is on your property and it leaks on either side, it's on your property.
Right.
That's not a city responsibility.
Well, where I was kinda going for, with this and for council, is the response, the exposure of liability going forward. It's probably okay, but you know, cause nobody knows what the heck was going on up there. I mean, what lines went where and finding them. But just in the future, if people see that, they're gonna expect the city to do it. And I don't know, I don't necessarily agree with the city getting into a contracting situation because that exposes us to more liability issues. That's why I was asking if, that was for that reason only. I didn't see, nobody did anything bad or anything like that, but
No, I get it.
Um, I guess enough said about that.
So that's what's been going on up there. Uh, we have one system we're working on at the corner of, I'm gonna call it the Weld Shop. It could be Gilliland's building at the end.
Okay.
That's right over there by you.
Mm-hmm.
That line had a leak and we've shut the line off. It only went to that hydrant. And we've acquired the parts to fix that. That hasn't been done yet.
Was that, was that a fire hydrant?
Yes, it is a hydrant, right.
Eight inch or six inch?
Four inch.
Four inches long?
Yeah.
That was put in in eighty-two.
I've heard many reasons why and how that got put in, but none of that matters at this point in time.
Four inch line.
Didn't last very long.
No.
You can use my garden hose if you have a problem. I got an extra one.
Uh, next subject is our, uh, pipe under the ground. The thirty days that we were waiting for the nations to decide whether we could dig under the railroad tracks or not is up. And there was no comment from the nations. So we have now submitted the proper credentials to BNSF. And they thought it could be weeks from their point of view, maybe months before they got back to us. And if you read any of the information from Stephen Marsh, I was in contact with the state and they told us we couldn't put a shovel in the ground. So I put a stop to the digging one day and he called back and said that it was okay for this group to come and pour holes in the ground. And if you saw the emails, TD and H just decided to pay for that, cause the state said that was not a legal thing to do.
Okay.
Before the nations gave you the permission. So TD and H will be paying for that out of
That was the GeoTech Core survey.
Yeah, they drilled a twelve-inch diameter hole down to where they hit bedrock, which was thirty-four feet up on top of the hill and twelve feet into, till they hit the basalt layer here at the lower side.
Oh, really?
And I don't know if I sent you any of the engineering pictures, but they're talking about drilling or opening the hole thirty feet by twenty feet to put the jack and bore machine up on top of the hill. And using that area up there, cause there's a lot more room around to unload trucks and pipe.
On the east side of the tracks, okay.
And then opening another thirty feet long, twenty-foot wide hole in which they will have the pipe come out.
Okay.
And
So we're not gonna abuse this, the property on this side of the tracks this time?
Only for the exit.
Only for the exit.
We need to build themselves kind of a tunnel or a ramp to do that.
They, they actually build a big flat area. You can go online and look under jack and bore. And they put in some railroad tracks and two big machines. One that holds the front and has a little digger on the inside. And the second one grabs it then and shoves it in. And then when they get in twenty feet, they weld a new section on. And they keep doing this, so it's a continuous pipe. There's never a hole that's not supported by a canister, as they call it. So nothing can ever cave in.
So is this just gonna be a sleeve? This isn't gonna be the actual water pipe, right?
I, I believe it's going to be a twenty-four inch canister, as they call it.
Yeah, just the sleeve, cause they put an eight-inch pipe inside.
Right, right, okay. Well, that sounds good.
So that's, that's going, but probably the biggest dilemma we had is our forty-six thousand dollars that we spent to put in our temporary line. There's still grumblings about that, but it looks as though that money cannot come out of the grant because that job was done before approval by the nations.
Ah, okay.
No comment.
And, and it didn't matter if it was emergency or not, right?
However, if we broke up the bill to what involved dirt work and what involved
Pipe, they may pay, they may pay for the pipe.
Which is the bulk of the bill.
Well, but there was, there, one of those emails was specifically about parts.
Yes.
And they still said no parts.
Well
Or maybe no parts, probably no parts.
There's several people working hard to get this money and most of them actually work for the state that are not private contractors. So we've got a couple of ladies working on our behalf who have been a great benefit to the city in the past and still continue to be. And they're working on the individual that I've been talking with to see if they can't bend some of the rules, so. So that's not totally a done deal. I guess the only good part of that is, is that we have some funds that were
Satisfied?
That were given to us for
The ARPA funds?
Yes.
Yeah.
That can be used for that, so if we need to pay off that, and I know that DW would like to get paid, cause they are actually out the money. So I think we ought to make a decision in the next, say, two weeks here to figure out if we're gonna get any reimbursement from the state or from this other grants and get that DW bill taken care of, cause we may be asking them to help us again. That brings up the next subject. I don't think we have any choice but to cover that pipe. And the two people I've talked to thought a foot of dirt as insulation would be
Sufficient?
Possibly acceptable to, you know, nobody has any real idea.
For how long?
It could be there all winter.
I'm just thinking a foot of dirt's not very deep in January.
No, but you do have water movement.
That's true.
And so temperature wise, if something's losing temperature, new water's gonna come in that's gonna be warmer. And so you're always replenishing a source of heat is, is the water does through there.
Theoretically.
So that, there's plenty of room for, plenty of room for that to be moved to two feet or three feet or whatever comes.
Yeah.
I'm not guaranteeing, but I think we need to start working on a contingency plan. I don't have a phone number for Phillips, but Chris Phillips, I believe it is, who lives up on the hill here.
Yes.
There's, there's discussion that they may have dirt right on the hill above, over there by you.
Okay.
That they might be willing to part with. And my only question to our engineering firm and to the state I asked this week, so now if we cover that with dirt, are you going to allow us to use some of that three-quarter of a million bucks that we're getting to clean up the dirt and salvage the pipe out of there? And one of them thought it was a reasonable idea, the other one couldn't make a decision. That's not the state's strongest point.
Decision making?
No. So
Question.
Yes.
Do we have any idea what the duty cycle of the water pump is? How often it runs?
It depends on how many people are watering their lawns and sprinkling and washing.
Do we keep a record of that?
Well, I'm pretty sure we know this time of year and now it's probably, I guess it's winding down a little bit. That PUD bill that we vote on here was six hundred dollars last month for running the big pump. Just, just that pump was a six hundred dollar bill.
Because if it's pumping continuously or close to it, we don't have to worry about freezing.
No, it doesn't. In fact, we have a big and a small pump. We've been running the big one, which is number three, one right over here behind the bank. So I don't think, I don't think we could count on that thing to flow enough water to, to allow us to sleep at night. I have, I have nightmares of getting a call again at three o'clock in the morning that that pipe is flowing.
Yeah.
That was not a good
Dead of winter is the last time you'd wanna have to worry about that.
Well, and where it goes underneath the tracks or that, that's gonna be, that we can't fill that up.
The thought was to fill that full of straw.
And just provide insulation there?
Insulate that, you know, the, which we could probably get straw around here pretty reasonably, I would think.
Yeah.
There's a bunch of, well, it's hay probably rotting on the backside of the school.
I think we could probably get a couple of those four-by-eight bales, as many of those is, is laying around town somewhere. So I would suggest that, that to the council that we start looking into that. And I will do so if you, uh,
I know, I know this is not up for decisions, but can I strongly suggest that in two weeks when we meet, we have a, be prepared to make a formal decision one way or another on how to get DW paid?
Yeah.
I, I think so.
They were good to us. I don't want them to regret that.
Yes, I'm working, I'm working that and I'm
I'm just, I'm just saying, I think at two, in two
Nicely poking people regularly about that.
Well, we know, we know we can do it if we have to. I'm just saying if, if that just is not gonna work out, I'm just feeling like
Whether we're gonna get those funds replaced?
Well, and what I would be concerned with is if we just do it out of the ARPA funds that we have control over, does that preclude us from getting reimbursed later? If it doesn't, then I say let's just get them paid.
Exactly.
We have the funds to do it. The only question is whether we're out them or not.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
To be quite honest with you, they were very good to us and responded at a moment's notice.
Holy cow, yeah.
Yeah. And that's not to say that we couldn't need them again.
Well, and, and if that is, if that even needs the council's decision, I, I, I don't know that it isn't within your authority to just make that happen.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with it as well.
Same here.
I don't, I don't know that that's paying bills without, uh, council approval is
Everything else we're approving is after the fact anyways.
I think if we made a motion, that just seals that deal.
Well.
I'd rather not ask for forgiveness for 48,000 bucks. I don't mind for a hundred dollars.
We do, we really do have a choice.
No, we don't. In all reality, we don't, but we could put it off and I don't think we want to do that.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Well, okay, yeah.
Put on paying DW, the people who were here, the contractor, who dubbed for putting in the new valves and brought all the pipe in, assembled it, got us up and running again.
Their bill is 46,000?
I believe that's true, Peter.
So Jerry.
It could be 48, it was 46, 48, right in there somewhere.
Do we have the funds to rem, to pay them?
Yes, we do.
Out of which one?
ARPA funds, money we were given for COVID money. We got two checks, one last year and one this year.
True for precedent.
I believe they were, each one was for $58,000. We got like 116,000.
And we're authorized to use those funds for this project?
I was told by our former clerk and two of the other people who I trust from the Department of Commerce that yes, we could use those funds.
Yes, for infrastructure, water and all that. It's in there.
Yeah.
On the social security guide.
So Jess, because.
Do you need a motion to?
We can't.
We can't, we can't do the action item tonight because it's not on the agenda.
But what I would say is this.
Strictly a week.
When, when we approve our claims and every week when we approve our claims, the vast majority, although sometimes there's some that are yet unpaid, but the vast majority of the claims that we approve every single meeting have already been paid because Jerry is in receipt of invoice, he pays the invoice and then we approve it. This is the invoice that we are in receipt of.
Yep.
He could have decided to have paid it already.
Considering the consensus here, I think we're probably going to approve it if it comes up before us on the bills.
If we weren't in receipt of invoice, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't feel this way, but there is the exact invoice that he would be paying. So I think under precedent of what we do every single meeting, you can pay that and then we could go beyond the claim sheet for next time.
Okay.
I would just wonder what fund do you want that to come out?
Out of the ARPA funds. Yeah?
Yeah, I would just say my recommendation is to see if anyone has any clue if doing that precludes us from getting the money back if we find people that are generous. If, if, if they say, no, we don't care where you've paid it from, we'll reimburse you, then I think that's straightforward because if they don't reimburse us, we have to stand it. If they do reimburse us, it all washes.
If it's a reimbursable transaction.
And this is net 30 and they invoiced on August 5th, so we're already.
We're past.
We're already past 30 days.
I've been in contact with them and told them what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
And the owner said, of course, we would love to have the money, but I'm not going to worry about it today.
Yeah.
So I would love to take care of that.
Well, let's clean her up.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you.
I believe that's it for.
And Jess, I have one thing I should have added to additions the agenda, but I don't think we called for it.
It's coming up.
Okay.
So the temporary water line, new public executive session is coming up. It's actually after executive, so if you'd like to bring that up, I would say, go ahead.
Okay, this should be brief. The last Lions Club meeting, the Lions Club expressed desire to clean up some of the fuzziness in how the tables and chairs are associated to the memorial hall. And so they said that I, I could carry the message that, that really at the end of the day, what always has been technically, if, if, if a person was depressed the issue, was that the chairs and tables were donated to the city when they went in. And I brought up that some of them have Lions written on the underside of them, not City of Harrington. And I also brought up that traditionally, just because the Lions Club doesn't own something, doesn't mean that they can't gripe about the way in which it's used. So we had those discussions and at the end of the day, there was still decided that we would, we affirm that it is the City of Harrington property. There is just one consideration that the Lions Club requests for what they did with that, is that on the day of Fall Fest, specifically in the afternoon, we need some of those tables and chairs at the park. So while we don't request any specific priority other than what goes along with renting the memorial hall at any other time of the year, that is one place where we would like to be able to take those chairs and tables up to the park for the benefit of the community. The rest of the time, it is up to the city how they would like to deal with the chairs and tables. And as such, the Harrington Lions Club will no longer be telling people you can take chairs and tables out of the hall at their discretion. It will be up to Jerry and Jess and city council to determine policy on that. It was suggested, and what originally started this for the Lions Club was the thought that sometimes people just want to use the chairs and tables without having to use the whole rest of the hall, which I guess there are some people who have rented the hall just to get the tables and the chairs before, which I thought was rather puzzling because my understanding is that if you rent the hall, you also have to have event insurance. So my thought in my head was, are they getting event insurance for an event that they're not having just to rent the hall? Which is a whole separate issue that we can go over a different time. But my point is, is that we would suggest that the, the city have the option to rent chairs and tables separately and put that in a fund that would fund the replacement and repair of those chairs and tables as time would go, go on. But that is a no strings attached suggestion. It's up to the council what they want to do with that, so.
Is Don one of your current officers?
Yeah, he, well, he's the treasurer, yeah.
Okay. He was in and gave us a little pre-20-minute dissertation on the findings of that meeting.
Yeah, he might have told it more colorfully than I did.
Maybe.
You did good.
But it was fine, that's, I heard the same things, so.
Okay, good. Good. That's it.
That was it?
Yep.
Okay. We have an executive session at which time we're going to talk about a couple of different people and employee pay. So I'm going to say 15 minutes and if it requires more on that, I'll have to come out and.
Start her up again?
We'll do that again, yeah.
So before this happened, just to reiterate, your request, Jess, is that the microphones be muted while we're out, correct? For the benefit of those still remaining here?
I, I thought it would be a good idea because in the past, when we've left here, there gets to be some conversations that maybe you wouldn't want recorded for the whole world to hear. So I thought it might be a good idea to turn them off for that time.
I just want to make sure everyone knows, anyone who's listening to the recording, everyone who's here to understand what happened.
That at 8:00, we're going to turn the mic off for approximately 15 minutes.
Okay.
And we don't have elevator music to play instead?
No, but any, any burbles that go on in this room will not be captured on mic, so. Which has happened in the past and.
Has to be fun.
All right, so I'm going to set the clock here right now. Let's go for a timer.
We're 7:58, so.
And I'm going to just set it for 15 minutes.
All right.
Start right now.
Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Okay. All right. Tess, Tess, we're going to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. So instead of eight fifteen, we'll make that eight twenty five. It should end. Anybody on the council have any of those? Okay. Well, public comments. If anybody has one, please state your name, address. Come to the mic and you have three minutes in which to air your public comments. Are you ready for that, Mr. Timer, man?
I guess I could be.
I can be ready too.
Draw.
No public comments? Well, I think it's time for Mr. Shane.
Move to adjourn.
We've got a second?